Okay, thank you everybody for coming. We're gonna call this meeting to order at 6:01. We are going to, oh, sorry Rory, do you have everybody as far as who's on Zoom? I have Dawn Bauer here in the room. If you could please acknowledge Dawn. Make sure you have everybody else.
Let me just, I gotta make this bigger so I can see the list.
Yep, take your time.
I've got who is on here right now.
You have everybody on the list?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we are going to be moving into executive session for the start of this meeting. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Hi, my motion.
I'm sorry, hold on, just to give some clarity, from the legal perspective, the two motions that you have on the agenda that need to be done in order, the first one finds that premature general knowledge about this type of thing has to be, you have to notify that first and then that has to be agreed upon.
Would you like me to read that word for word?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so I'm phone is being complicated, hold on, there it goes. So I move to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the appointment or evaluation of a public officer or employee would put the board at substantial disadvantage because individual personnel informed would be, information would be disclosed. Can I get a second on that motion?
A second?
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Did you say aye Rory?
I said aye.
Excellent. I also make a motion for the board to enter executive session under Title I, Section 313 of the Vermont statute for the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee, 313A3. Can I get a second on that motion?
Second that motion?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it is 6:04, we can move into executive session?
Okay, we've come out of executive session regarding a hiring issue. Bob, did you want to make a recommendation?
Yes, as superintendent, I recommend to Wyndham Board that they hire Ms. Jenna Kramer to be the teaching principal at Wyndham Elementary School for the coming school year.
That we hire Jenna Kramer, do you have a second?
Second?
And discussion?
When we go into discussion, let's please keep it to one minute per person.
Beth, would you like me to say something about Jenna first, maybe?
Yes, please.
Alright, Jenna Kramer, who is actually with us in the Zoom, is a 25 or 20-plus year experienced educator from the Boston area. She's been a principal, she's been a literacy expert. And she, we did an interview process with her and coming out of the interview process and background checking, we felt very confident that her skillset and her background and training, as well as her energy and passion, is an excellent fit for the Wyndham School. And we're pleased that she is willing to have this conversation with us and yeah, so we're excited about the potential of Jenna being on staff here at Wyndham Elementary School.
Great, thank you Bob. Any other discussion? This is time for discussion, absolutely.
So that's one staff member, what's the plan for the rest of the school?
She moved this for VCTVs on Zoom, so.
Did you hear that Bob?
Was you asking me that question?
So that's all one position, what's the plan for the rest of the school?
Right, so once we have, the plan all along was to find the teaching principal candidate first and then once that person was under contract with us, go into the posting that's already been up for a number of weeks and months and see what the viable candidates are that are in there, repost additionally if needed and continue to do a search for that other person and I would work with Jenna over the remaining summer weeks to do that search and help her fill that position.
And what happens if we don't find someone?
Well, I think, I'm gonna let one of the board members answer that, I think, as we, yeah. I don't know if Beth or.
So, there's multiple options, but the intent is to hire. So the background that Jenna brings to the table is very impressive and her willingness to really get this vision going forward for the school is amazing. So the backup plan is we will cross that bridge when we get there, but the intent is we will have somebody hired.
That's not answering the question. What are you gonna do if we don't hire someone? What's the plan?
I thought the decision was to be made tonight. For the parents.
The decision was made to hire.
So the decision that, what we talked about in June was that this meeting would be, what would be our decision if we weren't able to fill the position in the interim? So this meeting ended up turning into an appointment conversation because we did find a candidate. So we would give, I would say we would, we would spend the rest of the summer filling that position. That is the intent, that's the board's intent. If, I would say, I mean, the best way to say is sort of, I guess, how Abby said, if we are in a situation in a few weeks or a month where that's an impossibility, then the board will have to discuss that at that time. But the intent of the board was clear at this point, they would like to fill the position. Unlike the last go-round, we have a candidate who has earned the recommendation of the superintendent, which was not the case as you may recall previously. So I would not put this candidate forward if I didn't feel like this was somebody who could do this job. And part of the job is gonna be filling the other positions, for sure. And it's gonna be a challenge, I think, I think Ms. Kramer is up to that challenge. And again, central office, myself will be supporting her through that process.
Okay, so the, the new teacher principal that is now being voted on is going to do the normal format of running grades three through five. And so right now we are still lacking the K through two teacher, which could technically run off of a substitute teacher for 29 days, which puts more anxiety on any child that is in these classrooms. How are we going to take care of the children that are going to be coming to this school that are going to have problems with possibly having people in and out all of the time? What are we going to do for their social and emotional aspects of learning?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, the only thing I can say is that you're asking us to comment on what happens if we don't find someone and what that looks like and that's we, the board at this time is not prepared to comment on that. I think they would prefer to go through the process and find another candidate and if we'll be in an environment that's prepared for and therefore won't have some of the challenges that you referenced. So I mean, that's, that's what the will of the board is at this point.
So there's not a Plan B, like you've talked to Townsend Elementary, if the kids need to go there, or Jamaica, or Floodbrook?
Well, one of the things that, since last conversation, so there's, there's two, there's two avenues really. If, if the school wasn't staffed at all and you didn't have the ability to run a school and you were talking about tuitioning kids and parents would have to request specific locations they wanted tuition to, that was the pathway that we talked about back in June. The only other, if the school, if a board decides to operate a school, the only other pathway that parents would have access to is what they call, and this is under chapter 21, section 821, under Title 16 for Education Vermont. It's what they call the geographic consideration clause, which means that if you, as a parent, believe that another neighboring school in a neighboring district can, can serve your child better due to a geographical consideration, you can request tuition based on that premise for elementary school and the board can hear that as a case by case request. If the, if the board, just the law says that if the board doesn't rule in your favor with the parent, you have an appeal to the Secretary of Education. But the request is a pretty narrow, the law's a pretty narrow window there and it has to do with geographic consideration only. And so that's, that's the only other avenue available to a parent who doesn't wanna go down this road with the board and with Ms. Kramer. If this passes, if this motion passes.
Yeah, before anybody else. Sorry, if you can just shout out if you have a hand up, we don't have VCTV here in the room, they are on Zoom, Michael Pelton.
My question is, if the board chooses to hire the principal and involve the principal in hiring, currently, do we have any potential applicants for a teacher position?
The previous posting that went up in on June 16th is still up, there are two candidates on there, I've reached out to both to find out if they're still interested, I've had one reply, not the other yet, so we would start there. But I also think, as I said, we would probably also repost just to see what else we would get. But we would start with a pretty quick interview with one or both of those candidates if they are still interested.
So what you're saying is that you're, if the two board chooses to hire the principal, you and the principal could at least look at two potential candidates already?
Absolutely, yep.
Were these the two candidates?
Time out, we have other, can Sue, there's other people that have their hands up, everybody gets a minute, I'm sorry?
You just said shout out if you had a question.
I shout out to let me know if somebody has a question, because I had the computer so you guys could see it and I couldn't see the hands, Erin. I see Ron Boslin, I, I'm gonna, just real quick, Ron, before you go. Alright, so I just see Ron Boslin, so we're gonna go there.
Just wanna say, thank you Jenna for taking the time and I sincerely welcome you, I'm a grandparent in the school. I don't live in Wyndham, but I have a strong feeling for the school, thank you and thank you all.
Thank you, Ron, let me just, real quick. Okay, Bridget, has her hand up?
So I, I trust Bob's judgment in, in looking for a candidate and if somebody recommends, I do trust that. It does not alleviate my fears and my concerns and my stress because my kids are gonna be in first and second grade. And I think that we've been really reckless with our kids' education here and I don't even have words anymore.
I neither.
And that's not a, you Beth, I would also like to say that I appreciate that Beth is here in person, always alone, taking the brunt of this because these are some hard conversations. She may be a rock star, well, but it is mid-July and the, like, there's so much stuff to do and we let this go so far. I still don't feel like my question has been answered. My kids need a teacher. What are we gonna do if we don't have a teacher? Who is coming in this room to educate my two kids? Because I think this has gone too far and I think that we have put the school first and we forgot about the kids. And that does not mean that this isn't an amazing candidate, but I think you're setting her up to fail. This isn't fair to her either and the board, I've already expressed my feelings to the board at length, but I still don't have an answer. If she comes in, I have no doubt that she is capable, I'm not saying that at all. She can be an amazing candidate and I look forward to having those conversations with her if she's hired. But my children don't have a teacher and I have not felt like I've been given an answer on, on what happens in six weeks if we don't have someone.
Okay, Bridget Blanchard, Ron, you still have your hand up, I don't know if you wanted that up, Bridget, if you could hold on, just, I just wanna clarify for everybody. Nobody knew going into this year how things were gonna work out and I understand it's been difficult. You know, we were supposed to have our, our town meeting in March, but we put it off because people were concerned about COVID and it's unfortunate the way things have gone, but we didn't plan for this to happen and there's been a lot of participation over the years and nobody expected this at all. I think this has been heartbreaking for a lot of us to see how things were great and then things weren't. And I, I know I can, I can't say too much about it because I'm gonna upset people, but I think there's a level responsibility that every single person involved in the school system, in the school and needs to take some responsibility on how things turned out and now we're just, we're trying to figure out how to keep going. And this is where we're at right now, so Bridget Blanchard.
Well, thanks. When would this, when does the principal start? What is the start date for the principal?
So if the board approves this motion tonight, another motion they will need to make is to authorize me to negotiate a contract and as soon as that contract is settled, Jenna would start immediately. There's a lot to do, as you know. And the contract is a school year contract plus additional days for summer, so she would be ready to start right away.
Okay, cool. And the administrator, is that, is there also a listing for that as well on the school spring site?
The, the position that we're filling tonight potentially, is that what you're talking about?
No, like, so.
The admin assistant?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, no, we have not posted that yet, it was our assumption that that would be a little bit easier to fill. So that one, kind of, we're just gonna, pausing on that one. Because unlike, unlike the other two, that would be contractual positions, if, that one would, would be a different type of employee, so it's a, it's a different kind of a situation. So, and they typically don't start until a week or so prior to the school year anyways.
Okay.
The other, the other thing I just wanna mention too, that was talked about, with the, with the structure of what you guys have had up in Wyndham as far as the, one particular teacher was the teaching principal. That structure doesn't have to be exactly the same. So just, just if you're, like, if you're saying, we're, this person that we're potentially hiring is the teaching principal with the upper grades, it doesn't have to be that way. So we'll, the hope is that you fit the model with whatever the best qualifications are of the people that you get. So it could be a completely different look to it than what it was, just because that's how it was with Mickey, doesn't mean that's how it would necessarily be. So I just want you to understand that if you're saying, like, my kids don't have a teacher yet, not necessarily, it might be the upper grade that doesn't exist yet, or it might be divided completely in a different way, so I just want people to kinda think about that, it could be done in a creative, creative but different way.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just let, can everybody get a chance to speak first?
We don't wanna know if they're licensed, right?
Can we just, can everybody get a chance to speak first? No? Well, yes, actually, that is, so.
Do you have anybody else?
Are you all set? Because I have Crystal waiting, I'm just trying to be fair and give everybody a chance to speak.
I'm good, Beth, thank you.
Thank you, Bridget. Crystal?
I'm just gonna say that, you know, this isn't right, you guys have hired a teaching principal. We don't know what grades that person will be teaching, you don't have a teacher for the other grades. We have no admin assistant, we have no mu, or no R, no counselor. And to have it said to us that we all hold some responsibility for the situation we're in, we are parents trying to educate our children and when our children are be, being treated unfairly or not being educated, when you point out that your child can't read and you're begging somebody to help you teach them to read, it's very unfair to be told that we as the parents have some responsibility for our situation.
Okay, anybody else with their hand up before I go back to Sue? Seeing none, Sue?
Bob, I think you mentioned in the past, the two candidates that you did have were not licensed, is that still the case?
At the teacher position, you mean?
Yes.
There was at least one that was not licensed currently. I did not include that one in, in the two that I mentioned though. So there, I guess technically we have three applicants, but one of them I did not include. So, yeah, there's, there's possibilities out there. So, yeah, we'll see what, how it pairs itself out. I do think, just, just to answer a little bit, I think that, you know, obviously I'm new to the, I'm new to the party here and I think that there's definitely a lot of emotion and there's a lot of very strong feelings based on a lot of stuff that's happened. And that's, that's normal, right? And so I guess I would just ask, being the new person, is that if, if the board feels, based on my recommendation, that we have a candidate who could really help get us off the ground and get the process started, that, that you guys, as hard as it might be, put some, put some faith in the body to do that and, and, and see how it plays itself out. So, like, there's a lot of, lot of unfinished business still to come and I wouldn't put this candidate forward if I didn't think that they could do the job. As you saw last time for me, so.
Thank you.
Hopefully holds some weight.
Any other questions before I go to Michael Pelton? Okay, seeing none, Michael Pelton?
So it sounds to me like we have a teaching principal who we may or may not accept tonight. We have at least two potential teachers that are licensed that the teaching principal and superintendent could interview and potentially hire. So that sounds pretty good. Sounds like we're off on the right direction to me. And then it sounds like there's some concerns from the parents, I guess, of, about arts and about counseling. I know that the board this last year worked really hard to get counseling in the school. I don't know if that's something that maybe the board could look at. It sounds like it's a priority for parents and if it's a priority for parents, maybe it's something that we need to revisit. I know we have forty or fifty thousand dollars worth of surplus, maybe that's an opportunity for us to come up with some money for that. Maybe we have to look for some more grants, I don't know, but it sounds like, the concerns that I'm hearing from parents are, are we gonna have a school? And do we have teachers? And it sounds like we are on the right direction, we have a potential principal to hire and we have at least two licensed teachers to hire. They have concerns about art and they have concerns about counseling. It sounds like we have those potentials there if we're willing to, I don't know, use a little bit of surplus to make sure that they happen or look for other avenues to make it happen. But if those are the things that we're worried about, I don't feel like that's like something that's unattainable. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you, Michael. I see Crystal's hand up, hold on one second, Crystal, let me just see if there's anybody else. Alright, Crystal. Oops, sorry, I didn't see Erin. Crystal, is your hand up? Because you had something or is it just?
Nope, I have something.
Oh, yep, go ahead.
I just wanna point out, as a mother of a student that was moved to Townsend that has counselors, they have support staff, not just for special ed kids, but for kids that just might need support that day. They have art, they have music, they have all these things that people in Wyndham tell us that, oh, we can fundraise for this stuff. We want schools that we're not spending hours fundraising or praying we get a grant to have basic education, that happens all around us, by the way. At Townsend, you have a laughter program, at Jamaica, you have a laughter program. At New Fane, you have laughter. At Floodbrook, they bust the kids to taekwondo and dance. So to have us be told that these things are not big, a big deal, they are a big deal.
Okay, Erin, sorry, you had your hand up?
Yep, I don't know if this is, I don't really know who this question is for. Maybe it's for Jenna to come up and answer, if she's allowed to speak. But going, if this job is offered and if this job is accepted, what is the timeline for a plan? So what is, what is, I wanna know what the structure of the school is going to look like. And what is going to be done for our kids and what grades are going to be taught by who, what, where, and when? These are all decisions, I think we need to have answers to as soon as possible. Because if we still, you know, A, wanna move out of town, B, pull money from our 401Ks, 529s, petition again for requesting students to go out, which I've done, I think, four times to this board. That takes time. And again, we are in July and I, we need answers on how this is going to look and how this is going to be structured and when are we going to get those answers?
My, I guess my answer is, I would, you have to, if, if the board is hiring someone tonight and we're signing a contract the next day or so, you have to give that person opportunity to kind of understand the lay of land and get, get their feet under them and start to look into some of the, the problems that, that you guys have been experiencing for a period of time, that's gonna be brand new to her, frankly, brand new to me. And so, I mean, I, I don't have a direct answer to that, but I think you gotta give the, the person the opportunity to try to solve some problems.
With that too then, was that a question that was asked in the interview process? And if so, can we have the answer to what the plan or structure, or structure would be? You know, strengths, weaknesses, you know, a SWOT analysis from, you know, an outsider's point of view. I mean, I think that's something that can be shared because it's not a personal, you know, it's nothing personal for that person.
Can I just jump in, can I just jump in for a minute and just give you some of my reflections? That way you can believe that I have a voice, because I was the whole time thinking, when can I say something? But just, I can't answer your specific timeline questions because I'm not really on board yet and I just, this is going really quickly for me as well. So I'm learning the culture of the school and I'm, I wanted to thank you for inviting me tonight and thank you for the opportunity because I got to meet some of the people in your community and I got to see the school and to see some of the work of the students and I think there is so much potential and so much opportunity for the school to be innovative and to have things like project-based learning where kids get to research something they're really interested in and we pull people in and, you know, really utilize the, like, celebrate that it's a small school and the opportunities that we, that we can have because of that. So I just think there's so much potential there and so much going on, that's good. And I know there's a lot of tension right now and I understand with uncertainty it's hard for parents with uncertainty, of course, and it's hard for kids and so I, what I see is that things are moving towards the right direction, but I understand your frustration with wanting a clear timeline. I have been in tough situations, like I said, I worked at Boston Public Schools for a long time and I learned, you know, at the last placement I was in, you can read about in the Boston Globe, where I was fighting for kids with special needs and things didn't go as well as I wanted, I learned a lot about it, but you can learn about me, I'm passionate about teaching and learning, I'm passionate about all kids, I'm passionate about using common sense and finding opportunities for kids that are creative and dynamic and innovative. So that's kind of what I bring to the table and I, I'm also very transparent and wanna share what, you know, what I, what, if I were to come on board, if I were offered and I were to come on board, but the steps along the way, you know, I can't give you a timeline right now because I'm still learning, but as soon as I did know the timeline or know a date, then I would, as a, as a principal, wanna be completely transparent. then I would, as a pa- as a principal, wanna be completely transparent.
Jenna, thank you for speaking. I do appreciate that.
That's just to jump in.
Yep, I got it.
I have to leave, um, to go pick up a kid from a basketball thing. Um, so you, you guys have not voted yet, and that's okay. You can continue your conversation. If you could just call me later, um, and let me know where we land, um, that would be great. We can talk and go from there. But I wanna say thank you to everybody for, um, it seemed like people are, even if the passion is still there, you guys seemed, um, like, like there's a little bit more calm tonight than the one, the first meeting I came to. And I would wanna thank you for that. It does take a, a lot of work, and I think we can get there. So I wanna say thank you, and I'm gonna take off. So, we'll talk later.
Thanks, Bob. To transition the host, Bob?
Ooh, yeah, I don't wanna end the meeting, do I? That'd be bad. All right.
Rory, are you in front of a computer?
Yes, but I'm, my time is also limited.
Beth is now the host. Beth, you're in charge.
Okay, um, great, um.
Open, he is, he's out.
I see Abby, uh, your hand up, your hands up. Let me just look real quick for any other members of the public.
No other hands up right now.
Thank you, uh, Abby.
All right, thank you. Um, so what I would like to remind people, as we have all been talking about, you know, yes, there's a lot of uncertainty, right, with not having those answers right now. I, I get it. I want those answers as well. Um, we have a plan. The plan is to move forward with hiring and to have Jenna, be a part of that process, so she's building the team that will be existing in Wyndham. Um, as far as things that are not being provided, or, or somehow insinuating that the current board is, you know, not doing what needs to get done, the, since, since we have, before this town meeting, before COVID, um, we didn't have a school food, food program. That, yeah, we had to do that, but we made that happen, and we continued to make that work. Um, my kids are blowing up my phone right now on Messenger, so there's a lot of Denny and I apologize. Um, and, um, oh my goodness.
Sorry, I think we lost her. Oh, come on, she's paying attention. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, we don't have BCTV right here in the room, all right? All right, Abby, you're on hold. I have, uh, Bridget Corby.
Hold on, I can't, I don't know, for some reason I can't hear you all of a sudden.
Um, uh,
I don't know, it's like, is there something covered?
What am I hitting?
No, no, it's good now. I think maybe, maybe the way you're rolling it, I just, the microphone maybe was, I don't know.
I do not, cause I'm a computer idiot. And she may be back in. I don't know, Abby wants to keep going, or I should go, sorry, Abby, um, we, we lost you for a minute, so Bridget Corby's gonna go, and then, um, you can get back on.
I don't wanna go down the rabbit hole again of like, what we've accomplished, like, it just, we spiral out of control. I think if, to feel heard, which I can tell you, I don't feel like I've been heard, and I, I'm, I'm frustrated by that, and again, Beth, I like commend you for being here, because you sit solo as the only board member and get hammered. I don't know how you do that, and I don't think that's fair. I want a plan. I don't want fluff. And I, I get that we have a candidate, but I, we, that is one person, and there is a lot of work to do, and we are frustrated, and we are hurting. And my kids ask me every day who their teacher is gonna be. I am really upset. Like, I've done, I've done all of the things, I've, I've been nice about it. I'm really upset. Because it's my kids.
I know.
We looked at a house outside of Wyndham, because I just feel like we have, we can say it's because of the town meeting, we can say it's because of all, it's just constant. Every summer, we do this. It's constant. We are constantly putting the school before the kids, and she could be a rock star. I'm not denying that. But it is mid-July, and when I ask what the plan is for the rest of the staff, I am given fluff. And I'm, I'm really frustrated, because I'm really nervous that Wyndham's ability to provide for my children, is, is just not there. And one person, she has a lot to do. She needs a lot of support. Um, and I, and again, I'm not directing that at you, Beth, cause.
It's fine. I just think we need to go back to, I, I, I totally understand, but everything was good, and then I don't know what happened. Um, all of a sudden, everything wasn't.
But it wasn't. We were always frustrated, and, and, and it's always been hard. And some people are happy and some people are not, but we're drowning here, and we have no, I'm like, I'm.
I'm just, I guess I'm torn between, I don't, I don't understand. People were happy with the school. Everything was great. Um, and then, you know, there's some people that moved to town that were, were unsure, and, but then it seemed like everything was great, and then everything wasn't, because it didn't work for, didn't work for everybody. Let me just put it that way. Just, and just real quick. Understand that as a board, I feel really sorry, here I am, as a board member, um, and part of a community, we're, we're a public, this is a public education. It's, it's about all of the children. It's, that's what's been really hard to navigate. I realize that we don't make everybody happy, but we do make some people happy, and that's kind of where we are right now. So this is an incredibly difficult situation, decision for the board members. Because if we choose to not continue, I make some people happy. If we choose to continue, I make some people happy. Do you understand?
I do.
So, and but, right, and so here's the other thing, I just wanna remind people from the June twentieth meeting, the superintendent did not recommend the candidate, and there were some people in town who didn't agree with that, and who felt that we should look into that further. And there were people who said, how could you not listen to the superintendent? And right now, you're getting a recommendation by the superintendent. And so I'm really, it's, it's just seems to me a no-win situation. Um, this is really, believe me, this is beyond my pay grade. Um, so before I go to Michael, I'm sorry.
Hold on, I just wanna interject for a second. My wife, uh, sent, sent me a text saying she needs to get left back in.
All right, Abby, are you in?
I'm here.
Okay, well, right now, we're, I have, I'm gonna go to somebody who hasn't had a chance to speak yet, and that's Meredith Twishman Lane.
I, I just, uh, needed to push back on the assertion that basically everybody liked the school before this past year, and everything was fine, because it's, I don't think that's an accurate statement. So I just wanna make sure that, that doesn't go unchallenged as an assertion, that basically everything was great until this past year, cause I don't think it was. And I think many of us had objections before this past year, so.
All right, thank you, Meredith, for that clarification. I'll, um, go back. I think, uh, the majority seemed to be happy. The school budget was passing every year. Um, so I'm sorry, that's what I was, I was going on. You're right. I, and I think I also just said, I realize some people are not happy, and others are, and this is a really tough thing to deal with. So, did you have anything else, Meredith?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Crystal, I see your hand is up. Let me just see. Uh, Crystal.
Um, you know, I, I'm looking at Bridget Corby, and I've just never seen her like this. She has always tried to be helpful. She has tried to be supportive. She has tried to make the best of the situation at hand. And to say that everything was fine, and then all of a sudden it wasn't, that's not true. And the people that were in that school every day knew it wasn't true. And, you know, we still have really big problems. Nobody ever talks about this, but you guys, this town is still faced, with a lawsuit that could potentially close the school, or make another vote to close that school. So let's not forget that as well.
Okay, um, and I can go back. I, I guess over my sixteen years, for the most part, things have been fine. Yes, and not so much lately. Um, Bridget Corby has her hand up.
So I guess what I'm, where I'm trying to go is I believe that you want to make people happy. And I believe that you've always tried to do that. I agree with you. We hammered the idea of supporting the superintendent. I totally believe that Bob believes in this candidate. This is not about making people happy. This is about an equitable education. And today, mid-July, can, can all three board members confidently say, that not tuitioning us out is going to guarantee that our kids get an equitable education? We could go to another school that has the things and spend the year rebuilding it to the school that everybody wants it to be? Or we could take the risk and hire someone that could be great, but only one person, and hope that by August thirtieth, the school is up and running. It's about equity for our kids. It's not about what I like, what you like, what anyone else likes. It's about an equitable education, and today, the plan we have does not guarantee that. It's a hope and a gamble that we can pull it together by August thirtieth. That's why I'm so upset. I did the things. I gave it a shot. I came here. I tried for everybody's kids as hard as I could. I didn't sleep at night. I put in the extra hours, and now I'm here like falling apart, cause my kids don't have a teacher.
I, I.
I'm like, I am past, past where I've ever been before, cause I feel like this town is putting my kids at risk. The school is more important. We could keep the school open, and we could spend a year painting the walls, painting the outside, cleaning it up. We could reach back out to this candidate, and if she doesn't have a job, ask her to reapply in the next interview process. We could give that time to make a plan. But we're choosing to hire and hope that we find people, because it's, everybody wants to keep the school open. It is not about keeping me happy. It's not about keeping the next person happy. It's about an equitable education for our kids. And I don't feel like this town provides that. And I, I'm, I don't know what, I cannot say it anymore. I'm frustrated. This hurts.
I know, and it hurts people on the other side equally, Bridget. There are other people that, that don't feel that way, so this is really tough. Um, I have, Erin, Meredith, you still have your hand up. Michael Pelton, you have your hand up. So if you wanna speak, let me know. Um, otherwise, I have Erin Kehoe on right now.
I think Erin probably should go first.
Thank you.
So with, you know, just to add on a little bit to what Bridget's saying, the town has always, you know, definitely looked at this school as a building and a community center, um, which over the past, you know, that since I've been, you know, involved in this school for now nine years, um, there's a very few volunteers. There's a very few, you know, people that actually come out. And when they do, they're the same people over and over again. It's really, uh, you know, just been about keep the building open. It's a very rare time we actually talk about the kids. It's, you don't, we don't talk about, you know, really much, except, oh, you know, this is the budget, and this is that, which is also part of the job, and I understand that. But would it be in the children's best interest for you guys to come to a decision or talk about, and/or ask parents, which of the, parents or guardians of the children that attend the school, or could be attending the school, on what they want? Uh, we never see that as parents. Um, we see it as a community, but the community outweighs the parents and numbers. And, you know, with that, I think, you know, it should be a reasonable assumption that the board should have, a conversation about e- holding off for one year. As we held off for merging, one year for Sally, uh, to let Sally have one more year. Why can't we hold off to make sure that we have the best staff set in place for this school? Why can't we look at it that way, and to come up with a really good plan and really good staffing? And without going into this and saying, we got one, we need a couple more, maybe we'll get it, maybe we won't. But I think it's, uh, be a reasonable responsibility of the board to think about that.
Okay, um, thank you. Again, I just wanna point out, we, we went into this year having staff. This was all very unexpected. Came unfortunately after contracts were signed, so this has been a very difficult decision. Um, and the, these school reunions are public. Anybody that wants to come, parents are more than welcome to say whatever they wanna say. Um, I can't control what, what, who comes, who says what, who does anything.
Okay, but to add to that, you guys never put out any questions.
That's not my, I'm, I'm the board member. That's something that you wanna talk to your principal about, or I'm not. This is your school. It's not mine. I'm just here to listen. It's all about democracy, so. Michael Pelton.
Um, I just wanna thank Bridget and, um, Erin. They brought us some really good points. Um, they're talking about equity of education, um, in terms of what other schools are offering, and what our school may or may not offer. I think our school does offer some things that other schools don't, um, to include class size and location. Um, also, we have other things like the farm program. We have some volunteers. I realize that there's not a huge amount of volunteers, but there are some volunteers that offer programming here that we don't see at other schools. I think it's also important for us to remember that, it is stressful. Um, hey, we don't feel like there's a plan, and we don't know where we're gonna end up. But I'll bring it back down to what I was talking about before. We have the potential to hire a, a teaching principal, who has vision and has a plan, is definitely, from what I can tell so far, very pro-students. Um, those are good things, right? That's exactly what we as parents wanna see. We wanna see somebody who's gonna advocate for our students, to make sure that they get what they need. It's also important to remember that although there is, um, no other, there isn't another teacher being recommended tonight. Um, that was because the superintendent wanted to include the principal. And currently, there are two applicants, at least, that we know about. There's three applicants, I guess, but two are licensed. So it sounds, from what I can hear, what the superintendent was talking about, we have the potential of hiring a, a principal, who is a teaching principal, and we have the potential of hiring, one of two licensed teachers to teach the other grades. So we have effectively, within the next several weeks, the potential of having a fully staffed, well, almost fully staffed school. We don't have an admin assistant. Um, but one can hope that one will come out of the works, and if not, then I'm sure that the, supervisory union will help support us. Um, I'm sure that the principal will do what they need to do to make sure that the school gets what it, gets what it needs. Um, I have full confidence that if we are patient, and we allow the process to continue, our teaching principal will hire the appropriate staff to build the appropriate school, so that our students will be fully supported. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I believe the administrative assistant position was not something they were concerned about, so I just, I don't, that, that's something that's gonna be a separate hire. Um, I see Bridget Blanchard.
Mute, then you go over here and raise the hand.
Sorry. I'm sorry, um, I have Bridget Blanchard.
You're muted, Bridget, if you're trying to talk.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, good, okay, cool. Um, I just, I don't think we, we have properly thanked Bridget Corby for all that she has done for the school, because like, what she did was above and beyond, like, the call of duty. Like, she did so much for the school, and I, and I, I know that.
Here, here, I agree with.
It's, it's, you can't even put into words, like, how, how great it was to have her there, and how at ease it was after these big transitions happened. So to have an entirely new staff, and, and, no, Bridget, sorry, you know, like, it's a lot to take in, and, and it's rightfully, like, parents are gonna be upset about it. Um, So that's kind of where I'm at with that. Bridget, thank you so much. So, yeah, it's hard. I mean, the administrative assistant, they're like, yeah, it's not a big deal to hire it, but it, but it really is the glue to kind of like get everyone's stuff together and in order. So that's pretty much all I have to say. Thanks.
All right, I didn't mean to conceal that it was an important position, just that he didn't, going to be licensed, they felt that that was not going to be too difficult to have somebody come in, hopefully. So I'm going to go to Russ Cumming, and then at some point, it's getting late, we're going to, go ahead, Russ.
I just want to say thank you. The opportunity to send the kids to another school like Townsend would give us eight teachers. We would have a teacher, two teachers, and a paralegal for the kindergarten. We'd have her first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers, and a sixth grade teacher, even though we don't have any teachers, any students in the sixth grade. We would have nurses and school therapy and all that kind of stuff available. And it would cost $420,000 a year, which is $50,000 less than what we're spending. So I don't understand why the school board is focusing on keeping the school open when we can get a better education, more teachers, and more opportunity down in Townsend than we can here in Wyndham. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Russ.
Thank you very much. I think I'd like to call a question.
Okay.
So all those in favor of hiring Jenna Kramer as the new teaching principal, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Motion passes. And now the second motion is to authorize Bob Tebow, the superintendent, and Beth McDonald, our chair, to sign the contract with Jenna. All those in favor, say aye.
Need a second?
Oh wait, I'm sorry, can I get a second on the motion?
I'll second it. I'll second it. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Is that, can you guys hear me? My phone's like trying to die on me.
I can hear you, yeah. So, sorry, all those in favor was aye. I heard Abby, myself.
Bob Tebow, Beth McDonald negotiate the contract with Jenna Kramer?
Sorry, there's worry.
Okay.
Sorry, I was muted. I was typing.
Okay, so motion passes.
Was there a second? Then they're, okay, aye.
I, I seconded it. You made the motion, I seconded it, and it sounds like everybody said aye. Do you want to give a thumbs up, just in case? Okay. All right, we're good. Okay, I think that's it, unless there's any other discussion. Well, we don't have anything else on the agenda, so. I will reach out to Bob, and then we will go from there. Thank you, everybody. This meeting is adjourned at 8:07.